All right, we're ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, April 22nd. This is a combined work session with a special meeting thrown in. I am calling the meeting to order and giving notice to everyone present that the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion about any item or consultation with our attorneys about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
To present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Councilmember House, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. Please stand as you're able.
The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Councilmember Aslan?
Madam Mayor, our land acknowledgement, the Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Next up, we have open call to the public. And during open call to the public, this is when anyone can address us about any item that is not on today's agenda. And because you could be bringing up anything and it's not on the agenda, we are not allowed to have back and forth. We can't ask questions. You can't ask questions of us. So, Dr. Kate Rose.
All right, thank you, everyone. This feels, okay, I'm talking to you. Okay, gotcha. Yes. So, I'm Dr. Kate Rose, and I'm the Director of the Nonprofit Wild Steps. I've been honored to receive a sustainability grant from the city of Flagstaff to do a pilot project on carpooling for Flagstaff families. So, we are partnering with FUSD, and with Superintendent Pence's help, we've chosen four schools for the pilot, which will be De Miguel, Puente, Marshall, and Mams. And next month, families will have the opportunity to opt in to try this pilot program, which will be at no cost to families. It's covered by the sustainability grant. And next school year, hopefully, they will all do the carpooling. And then, this will put Flagstaff ahead of the game in terms of something that is emerging nationally as a trend for better ways of transportation. We're hoping that it will catch on for all Flagstaff schools the following year. We're also partnering with a software developer, carpool.school. And it's a platform that gives a lot of security and autonomy to the families. And it's an extremely convenient app that people can download on their phone computers to get carpooling arrangements with the people nearby. This has tremendous benefits for the environment, air pollution, reducing congestion, solving our bus crisis in Flagstaff. And on a deeper level, it's a new way of envisioning how we interact with our neighbors that is beneficial to our children and enriches the social fabric of Flagstaff. So, I hope that you will help me in spreading the word and changing the mentality. Sometimes people think it's not safe, or they're just used to a one-family, one-ride model. And we would like to change that and get people on board with us because we think it will be a tremendous benefit to everyone. I've got some flyers about it that I'll put back there. Feel free to reach out to me or to the Sustainability Office, who granted me this wonderful opportunity for more information. My email is wildsteps8@gmail.com if anyone wants more details on how this actually works. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Great project. Noah Baker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Noah Baker. I serve as the wildfire climate and community health specialist for the Flagstaff Fire Department, Wildland Fire Management Division, which is a mouthful. I'm also serving right now as the Public Information Officer for our pine needle drop-off pilot project. And with that, I want to share a couple updates with you while I have the time. So, to start off, we are looking at seven neighborhoods, which you all probably already know. Those seven neighborhoods, each neighborhood will take about a week to implement our project in with a week buffer in between. So, that puts our project timeline well into July. The question comes up all the time of, well, isn't that a little late? It's wildfire season. We'll be well into wildfire season by then, right? With that, I like to answer, no. We want to continue to promote our community, to pick up those pine needles all throughout the year. It's a year-round process. And so, we want people to be doing that. We want them to know, we're still in your community even though we're fighting fire. We're still here to help you with that. So, in those seven project areas, we have completed one, the first one being Railroad Springs. And we saw really awesome success there. First of all, we were able to remove a ton of pine needles that were built up on the curb, which is just an awesome thing. But more than that, we saw our community band together and really get engaged in a way that was pretty unique. People were cleaning up areas that hadn't been cleaned up in a really long time, and that ended up being a really cool project. But it speaks as a testament to our community's desire to reduce their wildfire risk, as well as some of our communication efforts about it, and really shows us the efficacy of that. Coming up pretty soon, at the end of this week, we're starting our next project area, which is going to be University Heights. That'll be April 25th through May 2nd. And this area is a higher density of homes than our last one. We're looking at about 1,100 different residents in the area, 1,100 different properties in the area, and a significantly higher pine needle load in the area. So, with that, we have added an additional dumpster to our implementation process. So, we have three dumpsters in the area. We'll continue to monitor those and clean them as we need to. But in this area, we've had really successful community meetings. They've been super into the idea since the start of the project. Our community meeting in March had over 200 people show up just for wildfire preparedness, which was excellent. And so, I don't see any issues with implementing that project there, just because the community is so engaged. As we go through this process, we'll continue to provide updates, but that's our current update right now. So, thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you have a good rest of the day.
Thanks, Noah. Matthew Dyer.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Sorry I always come here with something negative to say, but that's just what I do, I guess. In front of you, I provided a couple papers of some records requests I did on a couple city employees in the police department. I am coming here today because I recently just got them about like three months later, and I feel like that there might have been some stuff left out. For example, the person writing the noise ordinance didn't send a single email on the noise ordinance in over a year. So, I felt that kind of strange. So, I'm just trying to get the full picture here because this has caused me so much pain and suffering over the last 18 months. Also that, I did a, my attorney did a public records request on the police department for all memos and anything related to noise ordinance on my business. I did this because I was warned that the party nuisance ordinance would be enforced on me through a memo, so I wanted to see the memo. There was no memos, no emails, nothing. It was just police reports that I already had. I'm just wondering who I talk to next? Do you all have my email to see if I can get some more information on that, just from my own knowledge, to see what I'm dealing with? Because, yeah, I mean, it just makes it seem a little bit worse to me that I can't get any information on something that's been hurting me for so long, and I waited four months for it. There's been no issues recently or anything like that, but it was just a little concerning that I couldn't get any information on what's been going on in the last year with my business. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. And staff will follow up with you. I'm having a mouse problem. All right. Next up, we have four proclamations. We'll take them in order. And if you are here for the proclamation that we're reading, you'll join us at the edge of the dais. We'll read the proclamation, we'll take a photo, and then, if you would like to say something about the event or your organization, please feel free to do so. So, in this order, it will be International Dark Sky Week, Fair Housing Month, Administrative Professionals Day, and Arab American Heritage Month.
Take the stage. Can we dim the lights, please? That's a joke. How cool that I get to do this. Thank you, Mayor. Very big proponent of dark skies. And, you know, we just had some great news this week in Flagstaff. Our own elite athlete runner, Sharon Lodecki, who runs with Dark Sky Distance Running Team, just won the Boston Marathon, which is pretty cool. So, nice thematic little tie-in there. All right. Whereas the splendor of a night sky lit by thousands of stars has for millennia inspired and connected humanity with a shared sense of awe and wonder. And whereas in 1892, the city of Flagstaff was nicknamed Skylight City for the remarkable clarity of its atmosphere and the brilliant lighting that resulted from its 7,000-foot elevation and cloudless skies. And whereas in 1958, the city of Flagstaff created the world's first nighttime lighting ordinance prohibiting searchlights within the city limits. And whereas in 2000, the Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition was formed and soon created the idea of a Dark Sky City Recognition Program. And whereas on October 24th, 2001, the city of Flagstaff was formally recognized as the world's first international dark sky city. And whereas today, Flagstaff remains the world's largest international dark sky city and stands out as their success story and model for other communities around the world in stemming light pollution and restoring dark skies. And whereas the Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition continues to serve as a change agent, educating and impacting governments, businesses, cities, neighborhoods, and individuals about how they can take action to protect or restore starry nights. And whereas the city of Flagstaff owes its demonstrated success in preserving its dark skies to the broad support of its residents who cherish and celebrate the sight of the Milky Way in a star-filled sky. And whereas International Dark Sky Week has been observed worldwide since 2003, drawing attention to the beauty, wonder, and inspiration that dark and star-filled skies bring to all, now therefore I, on behalf of Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim this week of April 21st through 27th as International Dark Sky Week.
First, I'd like to thank the city of Flagstaff for the BBB funds, which have enabled the Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition to present nine days, nine nights, really, of consecutive events, almost all of which are free to the public. So, thank you for the ongoing support and the GOS grant we received. We are in the midst of International Dark Sky Week, and we still have four nights remaining. Tonight, we'll be at Thorpe Park doing an Owl Prowl with the Audubon Society. Tomorrow night, we'll be at Mother Road Brewing Company, where they'll have a special edition beer celebrating Skylight City. Thursday, we'll be at Heritage Square, stargazing and having food in the square. Friday night, we'll be at the Museum of Northern Arizona. Saturday night, we'll be at the Vile Awards after the ceremonies. And then, we'll wrap it all up Sunday night with stargazing in pretty much my office, Buffalo Park. So, please come out and join us. We encourage everyone in and around Flagstaff to join us in celebrating our wonderful, amazing dark skies. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Luganbuehl. I'm the President of the Board of the Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition, and I've been whistling this song for many years. I want to tell everybody in this community, I want to thank the council, first of all, thank the council and mayor, and all the councils and mayors for the last at least 65 years. That's got to be dozens, maybe hundreds of people who have given nearly unanimous support and recognition of the value of preserving our night skies, increasingly recognized as a value for everybody, not just the observatories. We're not just whistling in the dark here. Flagstaff has made a stupendous difference in what the night sky looks like because of these efforts. Our sky is literally more than 90% fainter overhead for the same amount of light on the ground. We can see our way around our community, our city, our roads, our walkways. We don't have any increased crime or decreased economic activity. We have really proven that you can have it all. You can have a bright, vibrant, beautiful community and a Milky Way overhead that you can see even from downtown. And the rest of the world is just beginning to recognize this. We get constant contacts from across the world asking us to tell our story of what we have done, how we did it. And really, it all rests on the shoulders of this entire community, represented by council, but really, but below the council, standing on the shoulders of the whole community, which has always supported this so well. And I wanted to thank you all for that. Thank you very much.
Chris, you'll appreciate this. For those who don't know, Chris, I won't say single-handedly, because there were a lot of people involved, but Chris has been the driving force behind Flagstaff's dark skies for longer than I can remember, and I can remember quite a ways back. And I recently gave a presentation in Cambridge, and my last slide on my presentation was of the peaks with the dark skies, and the people in the room audibly gasped when they saw that photo. It's just so stunning, and it's something so special to Flagstaff. Next up, we have Fair Housing Month. This is quite the production up here. The Fair Housing Act enacted in April 1968 and amended in 1988 ensures the right of housing free from discrimination. Despite this landmark law, housing discrimination continues to disproportionately affect protected classes, including people of color, women, persons with disabilities, families with children, and LGBTQ+ individuals. In Flagstaff, disability-related complaints make up the majority of discrimination complaints. Black and Hispanic mortgage applicants face higher loan denial rates, and woman-headed households, Native American communities, and LGBTQ+ individuals experience significant housing instability and rental discrimination. We can only be a truly resilient city if our most marginalized residents have access to stable, equitable housing. And as federal protections erode, the city of Flagstaff remains steadfast in its commitment to fair housing initiatives, recognizing that local action is more critical than ever. Now therefore I, Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the city of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month, and urge all residents, landlords, policymakers, and housing providers to uphold the principles of equity, inclusion, and justice in housing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justina Costa. I am the Assistant Housing Director here at the city of Flagstaff. I have the honor of accepting this proclamation and just letting you know that fair housing is incredibly important to the city of Flagstaff Housing Section, and we're grateful for the proclamation. In addition, I would like to welcome Ross Schaefer, who will say a few words. Ross is the Executive Director for Flagstaff Shelter Services, as well as she serves on the Board for the Southwest Fair Housing Council. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Again, I'm Ross Schaefer with Flagstaff Shelter Services and the Southwest Fair Housing Council. I'm honored today to be here with this wonderful and amazing group of people. The Fair Housing Act is one of the most comprehensive acts in terms of laws, in terms of civil rights in our country. And I am compelled today to think about the deep connection between civil rights and fair housing and how they are deeply connected each and every day locally. It impacts us so greatly. At Flagstaff Shelter Services, the Fair Housing Act protects people staying in a homeless shelter as much as it protects someone staying in their own unit. And it is under fire right now. The National Alliance to End Homelessness announced today that if federal funding freezes happen, up to 9 million people could become homeless. There are 750,000 people experiencing homelessness today, so think about adding 9 million more to that group. So, it has never been more important than today to stand for fair housing, to stand for what it means for our community locally. These kinds of laws can have so much protection and support for people, and I'm so thankful to be here today with this amazing group of people who is fighting for that. So, thank you.
All right. And who is here for Administrative Professionals Day? Ooh. Administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating the office operations of businesses, nonprofits, government, educational institutions, and other organizations. The work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities, and most importantly, have the willingness to learn and accept new challenges. Administrative professionals are vital contributors in today's team-oriented work environment and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for their organizations. Administrative Professionals Day is observed annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the important contributions of administrative support staff and is sponsored by the International Association of administrative support staff and is sponsored by the International Association of Administrative Professionals. Administrative Professionals Day serves as a time to acknowledge the valuable contributions of administrative professionals in the City of Flagstaff and to recognize the importance of their work in accomplishing the mission and vision of their place of work. Now, therefore, I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of Flagstaff, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 23, 2025, as Administrative Professionals Day in Flagstaff, and encourage all residents to recognize and appreciate their administrative support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for recognizing the important work that administrative professionals do for not only the city, but also just every business in Flagstaff. So we're really grateful to be recognized on this day. Thank you.
And Tiffany has to put up with all of this.
All right. And, Chris, are you joining us for this one? It's my pleasure to read this proclamation, and I'd like to thank the Commission on Diversity Awareness for bringing this forward. Whereas for over a century, Arab-Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society: in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture, and whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas Arab-Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas the celebration of Arab-American ancestry and cultural heritage educated our fellow Americans and counters misconceptions, harmful stereotyping, and shared misconceptions by other ethnic groups. And whereas they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab-Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Arab-American Heritage Month.
Thank you. I'm accepting this on behalf of the Commission on Diversity Awareness. I'm the staff liaison, but I'm not on the commission. That's the organization of volunteers in our community that works to further diversity in our community, and so they're the ones that wanted to put this forward, and that's the reason it's in front of your day is because of their efforts. I want to thank them for putting this on the calendar. Thanks. And thank you to Council for their work on this bill. Thanks.
Next up, we have April Work Anniversaries. Sorry, I wanted to sit down, I guess. All right. Let me pull up this presentation. Give me just a moment. So thank you, Council, for your time today. We're going to be presenting the April Work Anniversaries. To start us off, we'll be celebrating those who have just met their one-year milestone. So we're super excited that they've joined our organization. You'll see some employees here from the Police Department, Management Services, Water Services, Human Resources, and Economic Vitalities Library Team. On the next slide, we've got some additional folks from Community Development, as well as Water Services, again, the Police Department, and Public Works, and PROS divisions. Super excited to be able to identify these employees who are celebrating this milestone. Moving on to our five-year anniversaries, we have Officer Gardner, who's been with our Police Department again for five years. We also have Randy Cody. He's part of our Water Services Team. He's celebrating 10 years with our organization. And Jeffrey Roan, one of our construction inspectors, also celebrating 10 years. And Officer Ashland, also celebrating 10 years. Moving on to our 20-year anniversaries, we have Matthew Anaya, also working for our Water Services Division as an operator. And then transitioning to our 30-year anniversary, you might recognize him as Rick Tatter, maybe the Money Man, maybe Artad, depends on what your nickname might be. Rick's been around our organization for a long time, so he's earned a lot of those nicknames. I think the funniest was a budget retreat where he looked like the Monopoly Man, where he had his pockets turned outwards with no money in them. So he does a lot of great work, which we're going to talk about today, but does so with a great sense of humor and teamwork, for sure. So Rick began with the city in April of 95. He started as an accountant. He went on to Customer Service Manager, became the Finance Director, and then in 2015, joined our leadership team as the city's Management Services Director. So when you talk to Rick about his 30 years with our organization and being part of Team Flagstaff, he always makes it about what they've done together as a team. Excuse me. As an accountant, this team took on budgeting for the organization, and they developed the first five-year plan, which is similar in format to what we use today. As the Customer Service Manager, he implemented credit card acceptance and redesigned the new municipal bill that we send out to our customers. As our Finance Director, he and his team were part of managing financial stability through a post-recession period. If you might recall, we developed a recession plan. They also implemented a new financial system and continued that 30-year streak of the GFOA award-winning financial and budget documents. As our Management Services Director, Rick's team has been the ones that brought forward the PSPRS funding liability, implemented priority-based budgeting, supported several successful ballot measures, bringing needed refund, excuse me, revenues and funding to our organization, and reorganized Management Services to elevate grants, contracts, and add that very important function of emergency management. Most recently, they've started to create a budget section, which is going to be incredibly helpful for our organization in serving our community. Rick said one of his favorite things about his job is working with so many great people that make working in Flagstaff terrific with their dedication. Sorry, stumbling over my words. So Rick is in the back of the room. He's trying to hide, but we're going to call him up.
I know. I had to. I had to bring the team out. Shannon said it all. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the recognition and putting us together. I do appreciate that. 30 years is a long time. And who would have thought 30 years ago when I started as an accountant that I would be happy to be here as an organization still in the roles I am. But as mentioned, it's all about team. I didn't get here by myself. I had a great team around me. I had great leaders that helped me grow and teach me and learn the ropes throughout the years. It's just been incredible. And that's why I wore the Team Flagstaff tie today, because we don't do this on our own. As public servants, it's not about us and us individually. It's about this whole group of teammates that we work for a common goal for our city and make the city great and better every day. So it's a lot of work as a public servant, but it's really rewarding as you go through the time. And 30 years went by fast, but I'm glad to be here still and be your Management Service Director today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
A lot of respect for that man and this organization. So thanks again, Artad. That is the end of our presentation today, but the good news is we'll be back to celebrate May here shortly. So enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, and congratulations to every staff member for the milestone that you reached. Hopefully, you can all reach 30 years. And then Rick will be on his 60th year. All right. Moving down, 1.7, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Just a few things in the report. As always, we try to keep these a little bit light, behind-the-scenes stuff for your reading interest. I noted, and it graces the first page of this report, some volunteerism by our Communication and Civic Engagement Division, spending some time at the Flagstaff Family Food Kitchen. Nice photographs. Thank you for your volunteer efforts. Budget Team Process, yes, we continue on with our budget process. Several months of a process, and we are featuring our last City Council Budget Retreat this Thursday and Friday, the 24th and 25th. That will be at Core Services. Hard start at 8:30 a.m. We'll try to get you out early on Friday. I'd like to say this is a bit of a wrap-up, but really the wrap-up comes later on, encapsulated in ordinance before you in late June, I believe. So a little ways to go yet, but we're making good progress. Some exciting news with the Fiber Webcom. Am I getting that right?
Weebcom.
Yep, Weebcom. Has started the microtrenching pilot project in Joanne's neighborhood. How did that happen? Just curious. No, it's in the neighborhood of Swiss Manor. I also reside there. So we're excited about this. The microtrenching is a bit of a pilot project, but we're really excited to see Fiber come into the community. Some Police Department promotions. I might lean on Shannon and maybe our Police Chief to walk you through these. Shannon, can I bring you back up to the podium? Thanks.
In order to be able to honor each person that was recognized in the promotional ceremony, Chief and I put together a short presentation just to be able to say each individual and what role they went into, and also to be able to provide a picture from the ceremony. Chief, you want to walk us through? And I'll start the...
Yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, City Manager, thank you very much. You know, just before I go, I think it's important, you know, the role of a law enforcement officer in the community, many times throughout the week and throughout the hours, they're going to people's circumstances in the worst moment of their lives. And that can be a grind on our officers' hearts and minds. But whether it's that or the numerous Narcan saves we do in a year related to overdoses, the finding the missing child in Buffalo or Thorpe Park, the connecting of the individual to services related to behavioral health, promotion is one of the greatest things we do in organizations, to lift people, to provide career stimulation and job growth and opportunities. So I would be remiss, before I talk about these promotions, to not thank the city leadership. Rick Tatter, when we talk about the Budget Team and creating the financial pathway for us to accomplish this, thank you. I appreciate your mindset on that moving forward. But what we did is we've created some new leadership positions within the organization to really narrow our focus on accountability in the lanes that are important. And our first promotion was Charles Hernandez, Deputy Chief of Criminal Investigations, and he happened to join us today in the room. So congratulations. You know, Charles has a tremendous history in this city on a lot of levels, and you see some of this history coming to fruition in this image. Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Matthews attended the promotion, and I just would want to say thank you personally. There was an offering of a piece of symbolism that had been given to Councilmember Garcia, and he had been waiting for the right moment in time to share that with somebody, and he shared it with Charles. And I know it means a lot to him, and we had some significant conversations. So thank you. We took the operational aspect of the department, created an investigative chief and a patrol chief. Colin C is our other patrol chief, and that's very important. The other thing, oop, the other thing we did is, in modern policing, it's really important now to honor the support services, the professional, I don't like calling them civilian staff, the professional staff. You saw some of that today. We have about 61 members of our organization that behind the scenes are the structure, the bone structure of a police department, and it's important for them to have an executive civilian leader, professional staff leader. And so what we were really honored to be able to do is elevate Allison Hughes to that position. So she will lead our comms room, our evidence processing and handling, which is really important, our property management and our records. So we're really, really proud of Allison's work and her ability to join us. I did that again. The other thing we've done is promote two new lieutenants. One of them's a new position. Allison's position is a new position. One of the things that's really important is that you have young teams, squads with sergeants that are out there in the field. They need supervision and leadership. And there were some gaps in that. And so what we were able to do is add an additional lieutenant position, two of them. This particular lieutenant is Ryan Beckman, and he's been with our agency for 20-plus years, and he's now going to be our Criminal Investigations Lieutenant. So if you think about how all those cases come from patrol and move into the criminal investigation side of our house, it's really important that we have high levels of connectivity. That's tied to human trafficking, that we now are utilizing that enforcement operation, and then our Metro Narcotics. So he's our investigative lieutenant. Oh my gosh, I did it again. And so the other lieutenant is going to be our patrol lieutenant, Nick Jacobellus. And both of these lieutenants, I'm so proud of where they are in their careers, to take the leap of faith and become a leader and be responsible for more than self or just a few individuals. So he's going to be that fourth patrol lieutenant that you'll see out on the street. So this is him and his family and Big Colin C in the background over there. I think she's a nurse at the hospital, too, so they're a family of service. And then here you see Courtney Hurst, Radio Dispatch Supervisor. I'm proud to say that we have reached full staffing in our radio comms room related to our supervisor ranks, and so we're working on a few more positions. But Courtney Hurst will now be our Radio Dispatch Supervisor, and that's Allison presenting the award. So just thank you for the time. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much for that. Wonderful news. Couple of other tidbits, and then I might ask Joanne to take the podium and help present an award that would, or show an award that was given to our Capital Projects Team. I think it was about a week ago. I think it was about a week ago, Friday, the 11th. We had, more than a week ago, we had some very nice festivities in this very room when the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living held an awards event and featured a number of young dancers. I sat in for a part of that, I think Councilmember Garcia mentioned this last week, but I included a couple of photographs there for you. It was, it was very fun. Recently, at the airport, we reached a bit of a milestone. You can now have a cup of coffee at the Puleam Airport, imagine that. It's been a bit of an undertaking, you know, that involved some renovations and some procurement, doing things differently. We used to have a cafe out there, now we have what's the soft opening of a grab and go, which is really good. And will feature a lot of good food and coffee. And we went out and celebrated the first cup recently, and I was accompanied by Councilmember Matthews, and it was a smashing success. With that, Joanne, do you want to share a few moments about this award? Thanks.
Well, thank you Greg. I'm Joanne Keen, Deputy City Manager, and I'm honored today to make the announcement on another award that we've received for Inter Basin Waterline Restoration Project, and the team is coming up here. I was hoping that David or Stacy could kind of give a little more detail about the award, but also what's potentially next. I think I'm the one holding the award because I think I make it look bigger because I'm small. But here's the award. Brian wants to say something?
Thank you for bringing the award. All right, well, team, you're not gonna stand up here with me? This is very cool, Inter Basin Waterline, we won the State Public Works Award, we won a Safety Award for the Inter Basin Waterline, and then just recently the Water, State Water Award. And with that, the next day that we got back, we received notice that we won the National Award for Public Works. And so that's in Chicago, so we will be going to Chicago with Jacobs Engineering and Hunter Contracting to accept the National Award, which is pretty cool for Flagstaff to be on the board and receive a National Award. So thanks, and then David, you want to add anything?
Mayor and Council, I'll also add on the theme of teamwork that we could fill this room several times with the staff and the personnel that made this project possible. So just want to shout out to all our partners, all the contractors, all the laborers that were out there every day, making the job possible. So huge thanks to the team to do an amazing project, look forward to giving you a tour, hopefully you're able to join us in the beginning of June, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence.
It's rumored that a tour is in the offing, is there anything to that rumor?
The tour?
Yep, June 6th, we'll be meeting here at City Hall, so please join us. And if you're not on the invite and want to go, we'll reach out to you. But that will be June 6th, we'll meet here at City Hall, we will take you on a VIP tour through the Inter Basin Waterline, and then the project will be done this summer, so that'll be your last chance. So hopefully, reach out to me if you have any questions about the tour.
Thank you.
Good stuff, thank you. If the tour starts early, stop by the airport, get a cup of coffee. I was remiss in not mentioning a few people responsible for getting things happening at the airport. By the way, you know, spending time out at the terminal there really is changing in such a positive way. Of course, the beautification outside, the artwork, but inside, the terminal's looking very inviting and it's great. Can't wait to see another airlines at some point and just add to the overall vitality there. But want to give some thanks to Brian Gaul, the Airport Director, along with Adam Mialy and Heidi Hansen, and the many, many hardworking individuals who were behind this project. So with that, Mayor, Council, that concludes my report, but we have a couple of updates as we typically do during these work sessions today. On deck is Housing and Community Development, in that order, we'll start with Housing. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Christine Pavlik, and I'm the Housing and Grants Administrator for the Housing Section, and I have the honor of giving you an update about our section and all the exciting things that are going on in the world of housing. But I do have some awesome coworkers here with me as well, who are incredible and have made magic happen in our department, so. First up, I just want to talk about our Housing Commission and what they've been up to the last couple of months. So they've been actively engaged in reviewing a lot of policy initiatives, including the Land Availability Suitability Study and Code Analysis Project. They've also been very involved in regional plan updates, zoning code updates for missing middle housing. They've also given feedback about the draft of our Adaptive Reuse Bond Program that's in development. And they've passed a resolution addressing the impact of short-term rentals on our housing supply. They've also given some very valuable feedback about CDBG allocations, which you'll hear about later this evening, and the rental incentive bond awards, which I will talk about as well. All right, so first up, let's talk about our bond-funded programs. After four home closings in February utilizing our Community Home Buyer Assistance Program Down Payment Funds, funding for that program has been completely exhausted. And so we continue to have funds available for employer-assisted housing. However, the funds available for community members are on hiatus while we work to identify a partner. And so we have issued a request for statement of qualifications for this program. It was published March 11th, and responses are due Tuesday, May 6th. So very soon we will be convening a committee to evaluate those applications and hopefully choose a partner for that program. Additionally, we have been working on our Adaptive Reuse Program. We just had Housing Commission in March, they engaged in a very comprehensive discussion on this program. And then at our April meeting, which is this Thursday, they're going to discuss two key items, and I think Michelle will probably talk more about this, but the Single Use Residential and Adaptive Reuse Incentive Zoning Code and a technical amendment to the incentive policy for affordable housing. These are really important steps in creating this Adaptive Reuse Program. And so we are hoping to work with zoning on these code amendments in order to bring this program to being available to the community. Additionally, we have published a request for proposals for our Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. We're seeking out a consultant to help guide us through this. It can be incredibly complicated undertaking, and so responses for those RFPs are due May 26th. So we'll have some exciting stuff this summer and fall.
Christine?
Yes?
Would you just take a second and let people know what the RAD program is and overall what that is going to do?
Yes, I might ask Justina for help. But essentially, it is how we can redevelop our public housing in order to make sure that we're using that land to the best of its ability, that we have the most modern units, and are serving the community the best we can with our public housing programs. Is that good? Okay. All right, next up, I want to talk about our rental incentive funding allocations. I think you all just heard about this very recently, but we did another Notice of Funding Availability Process for these bond funds. And we had three eligible applications and two were recommended for the remaining $1.67 million in funding. The awards were approved March 18th, now we're working, staff is working to draft loan documents so that those will be available in the coming months to be approved, and then those funds will be available for these developers. We will know in a couple of months whether or not some of the funds that were allocated in the first round of these funds will be returned, and then we would do an additional NOFA, so we should know by June, right Jen? Yes, so next time you see us, we will have an update on that as well. Next up is some information about our last cap. So the project management team presented at two community meetings last week as part of the outreach and engagement effort for this project. Staff attended the Commission on Diversity Awareness, as well as the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meetings, both of which included a broad introduction to the project with information about where they can access the reports, the deliverables from this project online. And then the chamber meeting was really very productive, it resulted in a deeper level of discussion with feedback from a lot of community members. Housing staff will present at Inclusion and Adaptive Living later this week. And I'm sure Michelle probably is going to talk about that too, so I kind of stole it. Next up, we have our, kind of our tool that we use to measure our progress towards the goals set in our 10-year housing plan. So this is now updated through the first quarter of the calendar year, so March 31st. So we now have 273 affordable units that have been created or preserved since our 10-year housing plan was passed. We also have 481 units committed, they're not shown in the graphic, we don't update that until they are built and available to the public. We also have over 1,800 market rate units and over 550 residents that have impacted by things like our Down Payment Assistance Program, perhaps a resale of a land trust unit and things like that. So we are well on our way to meeting that affordable units housing goal, it's really exciting to see. Under Affordable Rentals, these are just some updates about units that are available now. This is a photo of Villas on Lake Mary, it is now fully built, if you drive by it, it's really beautiful. And it's 76 Lytec units, what that means is all 76 units are affordable to individuals at 60% area median income or below. They are fully leased up, and they updated us today that they are building a substantial waiting list as well. And so as soon as those units turn over, they'll have another family in them. There are also 32 units built and available at Aura Apartments, they're working on leasing up as well, qualifying eligible renters. And then Ponderosa Parkway, two new...
Excuse me?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you Christine, sorry, what does working on filling up mean?
It means they're undertaking the process of making sure that folks are income-eligible, so collecting documents. And then, once they're income-eligible, then they work to lease the unit. And so we ask them to report, what is it, biannually? Yes, so I imagine by July 1, they'll probably be full, if not sooner.
I'm curious about those raw numbers. And for the entire apartment complex as well, not just the affordable units.
Oh yeah, that might be information that we can get you through an email as well, if that's okay. So yeah, then we had Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona buy an additional two units at the condos at Ponderosa Parkway. That means they've now purchased four affordable rental units through, they've used CDBG funds to assist with those purchases, and they are all leased by low-income households. Under our homeownership program, I wanted to just kind of provide some info about how many households have been assisted. We had two households from City of Flagstaff employees that purchased homes with assistance through our EAH program. They each took advantage of the full amount, $10,000 is forgivable, $1,000 per year of service, and then the other $10,000 is a loan that is paid back if they choose not to live there anymore, if they sell their home, or if they're no longer employed by the city. We also had six households that used $40,000 in Down Payment Assistance to buy homes throughout our community. Those are all first-time home buyers. And then we had two resale homes, so these are homes that are in our land trust or deed restricted. These were specifically at Rio Homes, two of them were sold and purchased. So this is just seeing that that program continues to serve households over and over. As soon as someone is ready to move on, then we have a new low-income household ready to move in. And then we had four new homes built, two at Crestview and two at Woodshire that were purchased by low and moderate income households. In addition, we had a closing last week, another Rio Homes home sold. It sold for $234,000 to a household earning 81.22% of the area median income. So you can see that these homes are really serving households that are in need. At this time, we just have one Woodshire unit available, and Crestview is completely sold, and then we have five condos remaining at Ponderosa Parkway. And then just to give you an idea of what is under construction, so Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona has completed a lot of the groundwork at their starter homes at Timber Sky. They did receive ARPA funds from the City of Flagstaff that helped them to do that pre-development work. And then in June, they're very excited, they have what's called a blitz build, they're going to complete 10 of those starter homes, I believe in two weeks. So it's pretty exciting. And then we have the Sierra on 66, this is also located in Timber Sky, this is another Lytec development. This will be 221 fully affordable units for households at 60% area median income or below, so that is incredibly exciting. And then, again, that Elkwood Apartments, they are slated to be open August 2025, and they have 22 affordable units out of the, I believe, 200 units, and that's over by Sanawa Middle School. Kind of the most exciting thing going on right now is Fair Housing Month. We're really grateful for the proclamation, we also have some exciting trainings. So this Friday, here in Council Chambers, we're going to have our Fair Housing Training. Southwest Fair Housing Council partners with us to host that training. This year, they're providing continuing education credits. And we're partnering with Northern Arizona Association of Realtors to host that training, as well as to bring awareness to Fair Housing Month in general and to these trainings. We're also going to host a landlord and tenant training with DNA Peoples Legal Services. They're going to talk about the Landlord-Tenant Act, they can answer questions for landlords and tenants so that they all are well aware of their rights under Arizona state law. And then we're also doing a social media campaign. And so if you follow us on Instagram or Facebook, you'll see that we have a lot of educational posts, and then we're also posting these great videos in partnership with Northern Arizona Association of Realtors. And I just wanted to play one for you guys, if that's okay. I think the volume should be all set up. You'll recognize this local celebrity.
Hi, I'm Jake Bacon, photographer, animal rescuer, and proud Flagstaff local. Everyone deserves a safe place to call home, no matter their gender identity. It's about dignity, it's about fairness, and it's something we all should care about. This April, during Fair Housing Month, the City of Flagstaff Housing Office, alongside NAAR and the Southwest Fair Housing Council, is hosting a free Fair Housing Training. It's April 25th from 9 to noon at City Hall. It's open to everyone, and Realtors can earn continuing education credit. I'll see you there, Flagstaff.
So we have had a number of those posted by local real estate agents, folks that are just active in our community, as well as housing staff. And so if you're interested in learning, in paying attention to what's on our social media, or joining our emailing list, I put a QR code right here, it's active, you can use it right now to get to our link tree, and it has tons of links on finding us on social media, as well as signing up for that newsletter and that emailing list. And so that's all I have for you tonight, but I'm here to answer questions as well as Justina Costa and Jennifer Michelson.
Wonderful work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey Christie, it's good to see you and all the hard work that you've been doing. So while I was running for City Council, I thought I had this great idea on how we were going to redevelop, you know, some of our, some of our public housing places. And then when I got on council, I found out that you guys already had the RAD program, and it was just about the right time for it to start rolling out. So, perfect timing on my behalf, guess I got lucky there. Questions that I had on it was, what neighborhoods could it serve, or is it just in general?
I'm going to let Justina answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Justina Costa, Assistant Housing Director. Specifically to that, that is the purpose of hiring a consultant, to help us guide us through that RAD process. As Christine mentioned, we have the RFP, or the RSOQ out right now, once we get respondents, we'll hire a consultant. The initial plan most likely will be to start with Siler Homes, is what we're anticipating, but that has not yet been set in stone, and as Sarah, who I know is watching, likes to always say, no one will lose their housing at any point during this process, and so, yeah, we're excited.
That's wonderful, I spoke with so many neighbors from those neighborhoods, or that neighborhood and others as well, and had got a lot of ideas from what they were thinking about as well. So when that consultant comes online, I'd love to have a coffee with them and let them know what I learned from the neighborhood while I was running and collecting signatures in that neighborhood, so thank you for that. And then I just wanted to speak briefly to the Villas at Lake Mary Road. And I recently had a family member who had the opportunity to move in there, and I just wanted to kind of shed some good light and a good story on that. You know, they were going, they came from a situation in housing where they were more or less uncomfortable with where they were living, and it probably wasn't the best place for them to be. And they had no idea that, you know, because they earned so little money, that they could actually live in their own spot. And through some work, they put in the work, and they got the place there at the Village, or the, how do you say it?
Villas?
Villas. Villas.
Villas, yeah.
The Villas on Lake Mary Road. And since then, it's changed, it's really changed their lives for the better. So watching them, you know, come from a place where every day kind of seemed like the same day, kind of a gray day, to just almost living the second life, a rebirth, and the freedom was really nice to see on a personal level. And I know that you're spreading that same joy and that same experience to hundreds and hundreds of people that we saw on the screen today. So I just wanted to say special thanks for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could add really quickly, the RAD project with your comment earlier, there will be a full community-involved process where community members, current residents, will have the opportunity to participate. And so definitely welcome the opportunity to have you, councilmember, meet with our consultant, but there's going to be a big community process associated with that. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide an update. We're very proud of what we do.
We're very proud of what you do as well. Any other questions or comments, council? All right, thank you.
I do. Police and fire set the bar high last week. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle McNulty, interim Community Development Director for the City of Flagstaff. And as I am working through this, I want to point out in the back, oh, now they're walking up. Cool. The CD leadership team, so everything that I'm about to talk about in this is because of their leadership and the staff that they manage that have gotten all this work done. And I was hoping, okay, presentation, slideshow. Okay, thank you. I'll get it one of these days. All right, we had, Community Development had seven new hires across the division this, in the first quarter. So we're really happy. We've had some key positions filled, housing navigator, the housing administrative specialist, two building inspectors, a building plan reviewer, our historic preservation officer, and an assistant real estate manager. So really key positions that we needed to have filled, and have found some incredible people to fill those positions. Also want to say that Diana Luhon was promoted to Housing Services Specialist, so great job, Diana. We had 14 work anniversaries. Six of those are celebrating 10 years or more, so super proud of that. And Reggie, I want to, I updated this to make sure your name was on there. It was not in the newsletter. He was, his 11th anniversary is on March 31st, so he just cut the cutoff on the quarter, and so we missed it. But we did not, we got it in there. We've had a lot of accomplishments this first quarter. We have said goodbye to an incredible intern with comprehensive planning, Joe O'Connell, who really was helpful in getting through a lot of the regional planning, especially the comments and the meetings that were being held. But with that departure, we've also been able to say hello to Elijah Green, another NAU intern who is filling that spot that Joe had. So welcome, Elijah. Kevin Dunlap and Robert Solomon both completed the Code Compliance Officer Certification Academy and have received their Officer Level 1 certification. Dark Sky Specialist Janice Hackola received a City Manager Oak Award, and also was an exhibitor at the Fountain Hills Dark Sky Festival this year. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Bryce Doty and Carmen Pryor also received the City Managers Oak Award. And Cindy Cesares received a scholarship to attend the Arizona Building Officials Conference. And that's the first step to her getting her permit tech certification. What I don't have in here is last cap, and that's because you guys have heard me talk about that so much. I wanted to give you a break, so thank you, Christine, for having that in your presentation. But I do want to just say that the date for the community conversation that she had was June 16th. We're going to be bold, and we're actually going to have it on Friday, June 13th. So I just wanted to make that correction, but thank you very much. And I'll be back here on May 2nd to give you an update on that. So again, that's all I'm going to say about that project. 602 East Butler Code Compliance worked with the new property owner, and they removed 16 abandoned vehicles from both the front and the west side of that building, which was a huge, and cleaning that up, it was also the snowiest day that we had this spring, so they were able to accomplish that. So this is how it started, and this is how it ended. And so really cleaning up that portion of Butler, so great job to Code Compliance and all the work that they did. As I mentioned, Janice Hackola was our lighting specialist, was invited to be an exhibitor at the Fountain Hills Dark Sky Festival. She shared a table with the Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition, and they talked about dark sky compliance while they were there, and they got to neighbor with our friends at Low Observatory. So she said it was an amazing festival. She was very excited to be there, and Flagstaff was very excited to be invited to have a presence. Very apropos with the proclamation today. We also had the John Wesley Powell Specific Area Plan Kickoff Meeting. This meeting was the first time that we've brought kind of back all the property owners in that study area to come back to the table. We had about 30 nearby neighbors that showed up, got some really great feedback, had stations to talk about transportation, trails, open space and wildlife, as well as land use. And we look forward to hosting a larger public meeting in mid-June. So before we come back for council for an update, but after we've had a retreat on the regional plan, and so collecting that feedback from those neighbors. Oh, and I want to thank PROS and Engineering for providing staff, Robert Wallace, Rebecca Sayers, Paul Mood, Martin Ins, Paul Mood, I think I said that already, but they were all there and helped with the open house, as well as our consultant team. And it was really nice having all of those partners there to address all the different questions. And so here's the big video. So Mae Hicks has been moved. It's moved over from the MRF. And so for you that don't know, this is where Mae Hicks, who did sew this Arizona State flag, this is where she resided at one point while she was in Flagstaff. The home was at risk of being demolished due to a development project that was, is coming online. Lauren Clementino and Bryce Doty worked exceptionally hard to get funding raised, get a contractor who could move it, and get space at the MRF. And so it was relocated successfully. And I have a video in case anyone wants to know how a house moves. You have to look really closely to see the movement. I got ahead of myself. It's not quite at the MRF, it's staged to go to the MRF. But that's where it will reside until we find a permanent home for it. This is unofficial, and we just found out today that we also think we were awarded about 66 grants to help with the refurbishing of this and making sure that it can be stable as it moves. So I just wanted to get clearance to say that on the record. So, another thing that Lauren was instrumental in writing that grant and getting that through.
Councilmember House.
Sorry, on that last slide, what is that in the last picture there?
The--
Looks like newspaper?
It is, I think it's a historic newspaper. Or it could be a treasure map. It does resemble that. It was under the building.
I'm going with treasure map, and you need to share it.
It's much more fun. Reports say that it was from 1920s newspaper, so. The regional plan update, so we have received over 2,400 comments. That was a huge undertaking by Sarah Decter and her team. Elsa Erling has been instrumental in collecting those and putting them into a, since making document, to really get those into themes to help council and the public understand what kind of comments we are receiving. You all would have received that in prep for the regional plan retreat. That will be May 2nd. We've also been running an online survey that was launched on April 3rd, just to drill down on a little more detail on some of the comments that we've received from the public and to get more information on that about density and housing type. So we had, there have been open houses April 15th and the 17th that had, I think, fairly good showing. And then again, we'll be back with the joint council, with the Board of Supervisors, city council, and then planning and zoning commissions from both the county and the city. So we look forward to that retreat. Christine, we have a lot of upcoming code amendments that have been, you know, a lot of work has been done to just prep those. Christine Pavlock mentioned the middle housing. Tiffany Antall has been working with housing on, sorry, this bill, this one was, that came to you. I got ahead of myself. I started to talk about the single-use residential and red adaptive reuse, but middle housing, that one was part of a state legislature that had been directed and that we want to take even further to make sure that we're really getting that type of housing able throughout our community. The Resource Protection Pilot Program, thank you again for giving us the okay to start drafting that legislation. We'll be seeing, shortly, you'll start to see stuff on high occupancy housing changes that we had talked about, I think about a year ago to the date, and council had given us directed, direction to start making some small changes on that ordinance. Again, the single-use residential and adaptive reuse incentives, really trying to help incentivize the readaptation of commercial buildings into residential. So you'll be hearing a lot more about that, and another great partnership with housing. And then group living and institutional residential land uses will be coming your way as well. So just a little teaser on what's coming. Real estate has had some pretty big wins. They've gotten the possession acquired for all the properties except for the BNSF Railroad Company for their lontree overpass. It has been a four-year effort with over 23 parcels acquired, so huge, huge to be at this point in the project. Spruce Wash and Aurora Secco to Dorthea project. We've completed the first of two full parcel transactions needed for the project through FEMA Open Space Grant. And then after the project, this land will become passive open space for the expansion of Ponderosa Park. We just sent out the CD Quarterly Newsletter in, on, I think, April 11th. So I'm not going to go too much into the details, but I just want to highlight that we have issued 61 single-family building permits and 66 multifamily permits so far in the first quarter of 2025. And just to learn more about all the many types of applications that are under review by both current planning and building safety, please check out the newsletter. We have a lot of tables with a lot of information. And as always, staff is happy to answer any questions on those projects. And we are also very proud of what we do, and so thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here.
Council, any questions or comments? Great job and great news about the grant. Does that conclude the city manager report?
Sorry, we were just celebrating about that grant. It's great news. Just heard that for the first time. That concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Great news. All right. 1.8 Barrier-Free Flagstaff Presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, staff, everybody. Thanks for being here and allowing us some time to talk. So my name is Sean Kugler. I'm here on behalf of a citizens group that's been formed called Barrier-Free Flagstaff, BFF. We want to be best friends with the city. I also have Keith and Joseph here with me, and we're going to talk about a project that we've been working on to do with the city around accessibility expeditions. I want to make sure I said this right on a couple of things, but accessibility expeditions offer an innovative approach to promoting accessible design. Some of the key things that we're trying to do is make sure that everyone has access to every space, and that it's comfortable for everyone to have access to that space. Part of that inclusivity and belonging is making sure that when we're using our international symbol of access, like we already do, using that active one, reminding everybody that we're not just sitting there. We are part of the community, we are involved, and we want to continue to be involved. Today, we're going to get into the framework and purpose of accessibility expeditions, universal design, a continuum of pity to power, and simulations and how those rank in there, the accessibility expeditions themselves, how they work with tasks, leaders, the expedition, and then a debrief after the expedition is done. We're going to go through some desired outcomes, and then we'll hopefully have time for questions. This framework was developed at NAU by people who are disability rights experts, educators, and people with disabilities themselves. That's a key component. Whenever we're talking about disability, we want to include people with disabilities and make sure that we're involved in the conversation as well. We want to move beyond problematic simulations, and I'll talk about that in a little bit with that continuum. This is a tool to educate the community about the experiences of lives of people with disabilities, and how the environment affects our experiences. We use the ADA, or Americans with Disabilities Act, as a baseline and a universal design as our goal to recognize barriers and offer suggestions to fix them and build relationships to effectively solve the access barriers. So it's really about having the right people there as well. We can point out and find all the issues that may exist or may not exist, but if we don't have the right people there, it doesn't mean a lot. Or at least being able to talk to them afterwards. Accessibility expeditions are engaging and empowering for all participants. Everyone has a voice while you're out there. Not going to dive into all the principles for universal design, but we have provided those. But we've also provided a very meaningful comic. We use this in a lot of our presentations. And it is a school with snow on the stairs and a ramp, and there's someone, a gentleman removing the snow from the stairs, and there's children waiting, and one of them is a wheelchair user, and he asks, "Could you please shove off the ramp?" And the custodian's like, "Hey, I gotta wait, I gotta help all these kids that are waiting to use the stairs." And as soon as I'm done with that, I'll get the ramp. And the kid says, "But we can all use the ramp." So just having that forward thought of going, yeah, if we do this right, we make it for everybody. The changes in the front of the library are a great example of that. And I was so happy to hear that that was happening when it did. The Pity to Power Continuum was developed by Dr. Chris Lanterman and Lauren Copeland-Glynn out of NAU to help explain the attitudes and beliefs of individuals regarding people with disabilities. And this is their baby. Accessibility Expeditions has been their baby. Unfortunately, Lauren is on a flight right now, and Dr. Lanterman can't come to present, so you're stuck with me. Yeah, it's a terrible thing, I know. It's a simple diagram, and it really gives us that, helps situate educational advocacy needs for individuals and communities. One end of the spectrum, or the continuum, is that disability, people, disabled people are incapable, pitiable, be grateful that you don't have one, possibly inspirational because they can do something that's considered a normal activity. On the other end is the view of disabled people as a whole human beings, fully capable with agency and power. And really, that's the environment being set up for everyone to use it, rather than the environment being set up to hold some people back. So simulations are something that's been used for years to help understand disability and what it's like to have a disability. Unfortunately, they're so short and create a different kind of atmosphere than what we were seeking when they were started. You might put on goggles or a blindfold to experience something that-- You might put on goggles or a blindfold to experience something that someone who's blind or visually impaired might experience, try a wheelchair out for a little bit, but it creates that pity of, "Oh, my gosh, I couldn't imagine going through life like this." They don't create a realistic representation of what it's like to have a disability, and we want to make sure that everyone has a more realistic life by hearing about those We're on the path to power with our accessibility expeditions. We want our disability experiences to be the center of attention. We want to have all the groups include people with and without disabilities so those stories can be shared throughout the groups. We have group leaders. They're versed in legal requirements for accessibility as well as universal design, and we will be training, Lauren and I will be training more people on that as well to make sure we have enough leaders. Participants are provided with a set of tasks to complete at various locations within the accessibility expedition boundaries. So, it's in a very specific area. The routes will be designed so we make sure we're catching everything that we can within that route. There are sort of guiding questions that we'll give to the participants as they go through, and then afterwards, we debrief, and we talk about those experiences, share what we found, both barriers and good examples. We want to point out things like the library of where we've made those changes and been able to do something positive in the disability community or for the disability community. We have people taking pictures throughout the expeditions, and we give them a hashtag to share to, so we can use those during the debrief, and I'll have some examples as we get through the, as we go through the presentations. The participants, every group needs to include people with disabilities. We do make sure we have people with disabilities with us to make sure we have representation. We also want a diversity of representation from different areas, and part of that is the leaders and decision makers, government officials, department heads, community leaders, facility services employees. That's one of my favorites to have involved because they can tell us about the projects they've been working on that we may not know about that are really helpful. Project managers, community members, and advocates. So, we do have some rules as we go through the expedition. No stairs, no stepping off or onto curbs. Everyone has to get to the destination the same way. So, if someone walks down to this crosswalk over here, everyone's got to go to that crosswalk. All groups must follow, we do this at NAU, we've been doing it for years, so it's this campus, but must follow the rules and use crosswalks as an example. Some questions to consider is who is and who is not able to use this, why? Thinking of stairs as an example. Who is and who may not be considered in this design? Why would you think that? Who and who is not able to participate in an activity here? And that could be something where we have flashing lights, and people with vestibular disturbances cannot participate in that area. So, we want to think about that. Who do you think was involved in the decision, design decision here and who might not have been? What makes you think this? And then what does the design enable and what does it constrain and why? And we want to have those conversations and really bring that out and bring that awareness to everybody. Here's an example of a task. It's really about starting at a point and having a new destination that we want to go to, giving some questions for, along that path to think about, and then having those discussions as we go and talking about what we're seeing. When we get to the next task, we do the same thing. Talk about that destination place and make sure everything's accessible. Some good examples of what we've been working on at NAU, oh, this group is not part of NAU, I just want to make sure that's clear. We are volunteers, but we also have been participating with NAU for years. We have bike paths that are set up in a particular way on campus. You'll notice that the center is a bike lane, and there's a bike lane with an arrow going one way and another one going the other way. Then there's sidewalks on the side, so it looks like a street. It's very identifiable for people. You can look down and you can see that path. What's in addition to that is there have been lines put into the sidewalk concrete in between the path so that you have a designation to know, if you're a white cane user, that this is going to be a transition to a different style of path. And as long as you've been in that environment before or have some warning, you know that you're going to go into a bike path. And we try to talk to our users about that within our community. We have our accessible seating at the pool as well. One of our classrooms at NAU, more than one, but some of our classrooms at NAU have been redesigned to include a ramp to make it where you have multiple places you can sit as a wheelchair user. We commonly see where wheelchair users are given a space of one or two places within a facility to sit. This makes it where they have the choice to sit in the environment where they want to sit. The chairs are on wheels, able to be moved out of the way so anyone can use that spot. We have a lift to be able to get in and out of the pool. We have signage. We're again using that active symbol, and we not only have the words to name the room, the room number, we also have them in braille. It's set at the correct height so everyone can access that. Here we have a ramp with landings with rails to make sure that everyone can be able to use that to get up to the building, and this happens to have a ramp on both sides of this We have another example of that bike path where you can see the sidewalks clearly on both sides, on the right, and then on the left, we have a, oh, my gosh, gently sloping, I couldn't think of gently, gently sloping sidewalk to where anyone can use that path and get up to that building. It is a little long, but it is designed for everyone to be able to use it. During the debrief, the groups present what they found, whether it's good, bad, and ugly. We want to talk about all of it and make sure that everyone has more of an understanding of how that affects somebody with a disability. The facilitators talk about the ADA requirements and universal design as we're going through that, and we brainstorm ways to make it better. Participants share their thoughts. We get individuals with disabilities to talk about their experiences as long as they're comfortable talking. So, not everyone who comes wants to speak to the group, but we have a large percentage of us that we bring that are ready to speak on the behalf of how that affects people with disabilities. We take notes, and we share them with relative departments and leaders when we're done. We've already been talking to facilities to make sure that they're going to participate and be a part of this as we do this. We also want to change attitudal behaviors that have been happening, our attitudes that are out there. We want to create that cultural shift in our community leaders, in our participants. We want to take and make sure that those barriers are addressed, but not just for here, so that they can be addressed in other places in the future. So, as we have people who have participated in expeditions go on to their next phase or their next place, they can also look at those places with an open mind and help to create those to be a better environment. It's about creating awareness, empathy, and advocacy all in one event, and it's a great way to do that. All right. And I went through really quick, and it's a lot to take in. Do you have any questions?
Yes, we do. Councilmember House.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I don't have so much a question for you, but just a comment of how important this is and how grateful I am for you to be bringing this forward and sharing this information with us. I love the use of the comic that you shared as part of the presentation and just that reminder that what we do for, one, may actually be beneficial for all and bringing that sense of equity to the accessibility conversation. I guess if I had any question, it would just be how we can both support this going forward and, and maybe I should ask that from just the individual level of, like, what can I do to learn more about what this program is and how it works and what your organization is doing? And then also what opportunities there are to participate in the experiential part of it.
Yeah, so we're in the process of doing the training, or getting the training started for our leaders, and we have events planned for May 19. Is that correct?
Which one?
The Joe Montoya.
Ah, I have to look.
I believe Joe Montoya is a training, that's going to be a training expedition so that we can train the leaders, get them some experience, and go through the facility there and Thorpe Park itself, just right there, and make it where we can take them on a path and make them comfortable to be able to be leading others. And then the next event will be either July 25 or 26, and we are looking to do that at the library and here at City Hall. And we want to take possibly Wheeler Park, we're trying to, it's hard to figure out, we've been doing this at NAU for years, but we've never done this out in the public so that we have different groups, how many are going to show up, and we want to be prepared to accommodate everybody.
Anybody in the public is invited to participate in this, and we encourage everybody at the places we go to, the staff, whether it's private or public, the staff to participate as well. This is collaboration. This is not control. You hear the politicians, right? Control, we got to take control, control. No, this is not about control. This is collaboration. You never hear them talk about that, do you? But this is what it is. It's collaboration. We want to work with you. We want to help you understand these things. You can teach us, and we can teach you, and that can all go forward in our lives, no matter where we are or where we work. Can even work behind the scenes, behind the public area where you're working. You can go along and say, "Oh, you know, I learned that on an expedition, and this right here, maybe we should look at fixing this the next time we do a refurb or whatever of the area." And so, that's what it's all about, is working with you, not against you.
Yeah, one of the things that wasn't part of the presentation that's important to think about as well is we can point out things. This is not an audit. This is not a, "You need to fix this now." This is, let's figure out how to work this into the budget and make it work for the future.
Expedition, we want to look for it, find it, and have you guys help us do that.
And Jen Brown just added in the chat that the Joe Montoya expedition training is May 30, 11 to 1.
All right. Thank you, Jen.
And Councilmember House, was that it? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I think these are very important discussions to have, and I appreciate the information. And I do love the word collaboration, so thank you for bringing that up. I just took a tour of the downtown connection center, and they are also using the universal design, and I wanted to point that out. So, it's, you know, conversations like this that help inspire future design. So, thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you for letting us know that.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. Have you had interest from apartment and housing developers, the people that are building all the multifamily units around the community? Have those developers participated in your, in your efforts?
Not directly that we know of, but we do have a large contingency of construction management students that have attended over the years. So, there is the possibility that we've had some attend, just not that we know directly. We have had construction people within NAU that have been involved. So.
Thank you. It's a great presentation. You've certainly opened my eyes, and I look forward to participating in that path to power experience.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I saw your little cartoon really drew my attention, and it reminded me of a project that I kind of helped collaborate with the city on when I was on the B-PAC, and that was the redevelopment of the front of the library there. And I remember when we were going through redevelopment process and trying to figure out what kind of, since I was on that commission, which is beautification and public art, we were trying to figure out, you know, where the different art features were going to be, and of course, ADA compliance was the big, the big one. If you go to that now, now that it's been redeveloped, what you'll see is a really wide, slanted area, graded area to go up in a wheelchair, or it's completely ADA compliant, and it takes you on a walk through the art, and that was intentional by the design of the commission and everybody else who was involved with it. It wasn't just the commission, to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to interact with this art on a very visceral level. And I'll never forget, if you go there now, you'll see that there's just a little old staircase going up on one. It's kind of, kind of a tight staircase, and it's a lot different than it used to be. And I remember somebody saying, "Well, how are the people going to get up and down the stairs?" It reminded me of that cartoon where the answer was, "Well, we're trying to encourage everyone to enjoy the art by going up the sloped ramp that any and everyone can use." And, and using the staircase is kind of a, if you have to get there quicker, you can use that. So, it's something that I've been happy to be a part of with the city for quite some time, and I can't wait to interact with this program. Thank you.
Thank you. I was enjoying that artwork before I came here today. It's great. I love the new entrance.
One of our goals.
Go ahead and step up to the microphone.
Yeah, one of, one of our goals is, again, collaboration to work with you folks, or anybody, anywhere, and, you know, with any businesses or city, we are here to try to point out things that we know about and teach you folks what these things are and maybe avoid a confrontation with the DOJ, somebody reporting you, you know? If we work together and point these out, and you guys work with us on those things and see them yourself and learn to see them yourself when we're not even around, that could save you a lawsuit. And we want to do that. We want to help you avoid that kind of stuff because, you know, I'm a taxpayer. That comes out of my money, too, if you have to pay those things, and a lawyer to deal with it.
I do want to point out that there is a very valid reason for audits as well. We're not trying to say do one or the other. We believe in both. They both have their value to the community, and it's, we're here to help, as Keith was
Well, I encourage you, as these are set up, to let us know, and we can help publicize them if, if you want it shared broadly. And Keith, thank you for your service on the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living, and to city staff who work so hard with the commission to, you know, to make sure that our facilities are not just compliant, but are, the equity issue is addressed so that we all have equal access to those spaces. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, oh, next up, 1.9 presentation about CDBG. All right. Thanks for having me again. All right. Thanks for having me up again to talk about Community Development Block Grant Program. I was just here in January, so I'm not going to go super into depth about. You were just here 10 minutes ago. Oh, yeah, that's right. I've been here all night. Got to see a lot of me today, sorry. So, I don't want to go too in-depth with, you know, what CDBG is, but I will give a little reminder, mostly for the benefit of the public and you as well. And then I want to talk about what our process has been like for our 2025 annual action plan, let you know who applied for funds and what our recommendations are, and then answer any questions you might have about our, our process and what we intend to do with our funding this year. So, most of you already know that the CDBG program is administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it's for funding specifically housing and community development activities. One thing that is really cool to know related to the presentation we just saw is funding is, can be used for the reme- One thing that is really cool to know related to the presentation we just saw is funding is, can be used for the removal of architectural barriers and that's pretty much citywide. So if there are public spaces where we would like to improve accessibility, CDBG funds can be used for that as well. So, just thought of that while they were presenting. Um, the program is meant to benefit low and moderate income individuals and households. And we receive funding because we are what they call an entitlement community, that means we have a population of over fifty thousand people and we receive an annual allocation. So every year we receive funds. Now, what do we have to do to receive those funds? We do have to create a lot of planning documents for HUD to let them know that we are working to utilize their funds in a way that truly benefits our community. So every five years, we complete what's called a consolidated plan. This tells HUD what we, how we are going to decide what to do with the funds. And so every five years, we do this in-depth assessment of community and housing needs. Um, we last submitted that document to HUD in twenty twenty-one. Um, this program year, twenty twenty-five, is the last annual action plan for this consolidated plan. So this fall, we will be undertaking another five-year plan. Um, that will involve a lot more um, community involvement than we do just for our annual action plan because it will guide how we use our funds over the next five years. Um, every year, we do this annual action plan process. This report tells HUD what we're going to do with this year's funds. Um, it's due every May and that is what we are working on today. Then in the fall, we do our CAPER, Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. It lets HUD know what we did with the funds the prior year and what, who the beneficiaries were, what goals we met. If we didn't meet our goals, why didn't we? Um, HUD wants to know, you know, um, did we have any challenges with, with spending or, or spending down our funds or things like that? We can also do amendments as needed and every five years, we do a fair housing plan as well. And that plan kind of says what we're going to do as a community to advance fair housing. So we commit to holding trainings like we are this month and proclaiming April as fair housing month. So how can we spend the funding? Well, it's essentially how you, city council determine based on those needs that we've identified in our consolidated plan, the primary objective and the national objective. So um, the primary objective is the development of viable urban communities for low and moderate income persons by providing affordable housing, a suitable living environment and economic opportunities. Um, so who in Flagstaff is low to moderate income? Well, for example, um, this is a chart that shows uh eighty percent area median income categories and below. So a household of four making less than eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is considered low or moderate income in our community. One thing to know is that twenty percent of Flagstaff residents, including twenty-seven percent of children under eighteen, live below the poverty line. And the poverty line is, is in line with that fifty percent very low income category.
Christine?
Oh yes, go ahead.
And the AMI is determined by HUD and it is the FMPO or Coconino County?
I believe it's the metropolitan city, it is Coconino County, okay, yeah, so it's the entire county. Our, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, ours is the FMPO, yes. So what kind of activities are eligible for funding? Well, um, we can do activities that serve what's called a limited clientele, so that's specifically low and moderate income persons. They can either be presumed to be low and moderate income because perhaps they are experiencing homelessness. Um, maybe they are victims of domestic violence or they can be determined to be low income. And what that means is that we collect documentation as to their annual household income and assets in order to show on paper that they are low and moderate income. Other activities include activities that have a housing benefit, so things like down payment assistance or acquisition of units that will be available for rent to low and moderate income households. Um, area benefit projects which benefit every resident in a target area and I'll remind you what those target areas are in a moment, or job creation activities. So in our consolidated plan, we identify neighborhoods that we call target neighborhoods. And these are areas in our community that have a concentration of low and moderate income households. And in Flagstaff, we actually do both a low income concentration as well as a minority concentration. So our target areas for the con-plan we're in right now are La Plaza Vieja, Sunnyside, Southside and Pine Knoll. And that means that when we do infrastructure projects or neighborhood revitalization projects, public facility projects in these neighborhoods. They are considered eligible because they benefit everyone in that is in that low income neighborhood. So, um, what are some of the consolidated plan goals we have right now, I'll just go through these quickly. Um, one is to support neighborhood revitalization in public facilities as well as infrastructure improvements in those target areas. So that can include things like playground equipment in parks, maybe um, new gutters, things like that in the, in the actual neighborhoods that can help with street improvement, um, beautification. We also have goals to support public services, so services to meet basic needs, housing stabilization, that would be things like eviction prevention. Um, and then we also have a goal of providing funds to increase shelter units and then also support operations at homeless facilities. Or for programs that are serving individuals experiencing homelessness. And then our last goal is to support the development and preservation of affordable housing. So that can include owner occupied housing rehabilitation, development, so building units or purchasing units or providing um, funds for owners to, for home, home buyers to buy homes. One of the most important things to remember and it's, it gets really complicated every year is that there are these funding caps set by HUD. We are only allowed to use twenty percent of our annual entitlement amount for administration. So in, for the city, what we do is we use ten percent for indirect, that supports funding, you know, our legal department, our, our management services department. As well as ten percent for administration, so when we take an ad out in the newspaper, it'll pay for that or it'll pay for the individuals that are administering the projects. And then we have a fifteen percent cap on public service activities. So this includes that operations um, of programs for individuals experiencing homelessness. Uh, it includes, you know, childcare services, anything where we're not paying for construction of some sort. So that's a pretty limited amount of funds, typically we have about ninety to a hundred thousand dollars in that category every year. And it's incredibly competitive, there are almost always folks who don't get funded when they apply for those funds. We also have a requirement that we spend our funds in a timely manner. Along with a lot of grantees throughout the country, we have struggled to spend our funds in a timely way the last couple of years. We are on track now, we will be back in timely status this year, they run that test every May second. Um, so we're really excited that we're back in compliance for timely expenditure, but we want to stay that way. It's really crucial that we stay that way, especially now because some of those, um, you know, leniencies that the government offered because of COVID and everybody having a surplus of funds are going to be going away. And so we want to make sure we're in compliance. That's why we, we really evaluate applications for how quickly that organization is going to be able to spend their funds. We don't want to provide funds to a project that is in development, that they, that they don't have, you know, site control or they don't have their plans for their construction project. Because we need to be able to start these projects as soon as the government gives us the go-ahead, which is usually October, November of the, of this year. So every year, we undertake a proposal process, we release a notice of funding availability to the community. And they are, community organizations then provide proposals to us. We convene a ranking committee, it is made up of staff, housing commission members and community experts. So folks who have worked in the nonprofit world or maybe they have a lot of experience in social services. Um, staff really is the one who does the risk assessment and determines whether or not these organizations seem like they will have the ability to undertake administering these funds without issue. Because they do have a lot of regulations. And then the ranking committee helps us identify that these are projects that are truly meeting a community need. And then we, we publish our draft annual action plan for thirty days to receive feedback from the community. We went to our housing commission last month to run our recommendations by them. And then we have come to you for a final council approval. So I'm here today just to really let you know what the recommendations are and I'll be back May twentieth to ask for a formal resolution authorizing our submission of our annual action plan. So some of the other things that we consider are the priorities you set back in January, which was to, for projects that are related to housing and addressing the availability of rental and ownership housing. Um, addressing homelessness, neighborhood revitalization and workforce and job training. Now that we have the ten-year housing plan, we also use that as a guide to prioritizing funds. So for that risk assessment, I think one of the most important things to remember is that we are the responsible entity to HUD. So we don't get to go to HUD and say XYZ nonprofit didn't spend their money because they don't care. They, they only see that we didn't spend our money and so um, we take that very seriously. We want to make sure that if we are giving a newer nonprofit a, a chance, that we have that flexibility and that they already have the system set up in their organization. Um, internal controls, things like that. So uh, we also have contract requirements and federal overlay statutes, we want to make sure that they have the capacity to meet those requirements as well. So um, I talked a lot about how CDBG requires community involvement, we call that public participation. So back in January, we hosted a meeting with a League of Neighborhoods at the Market of Dreams. This was to give the community an idea of what CDBG funds can be used for, but also the projects that are being undertaken by other departments. So we had planning there, we had, um, what is the department called that does our big projects? CAP, yeah, I totally brain farted there, sorry. Um, they were there and they were able to give an idea of some of the really exciting projects we have going on, like the Butler Avenue things. Um, and then they are also able to get feedback from the community about what's going on in some of these target neighborhoods. Like, hey, why don't we have fences around our, our drainage areas? Why don't we have this, why don't we have that? And so um, it's a great way to kind of get feedback also about how the process works for the city. How do we choose our projects that are going to be undertaken in the next couple of years? We also had a public meeting where we released that notice of funding availability and we explained what CDBG is, how it can be used. Um, we had a public hearing to review the proposals that were submitted, so to make sure that the community has an opportunity to say, oh wow, I see that someone from, um, for an example, Boys and Girls Club applied. They did not apply this year, but had they, oh yeah, they provide childcare for low income families and I really see that as a huge need in our community. So it's a great time for the, um, the public to be able to give their input on what has been requested. And then, like I said, we went to the housing commission, March twenty-seventh, and I did not update this slide, I still have May sixth on there, but we're going to come back on May twentieth. And that is because we have not yet received our total allocation from HUD. The hope is that maybe that will give us the chance to receive it in the next couple of weeks. If we don't, we'll still come to you and get, just give you an idea of, hey, if it's less, this is what we plan to do, if it's more, here's what we plan to do. I know they're working on it because I saw a document from HUD that had their budget allocation outlined, so I think it's coming soon. Alright, so this year, I want to give you an idea of the funding we think we might have available. And we're still working on trying to figure out how much program income we think might, um, might be accessible this year. And so some of these numbers might change when we come back on the twentieth. But at this time, we're estimating that we're going to have about six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars available. So that includes our estimated entitlement amount plus program income, so those are loans that are paid off by past beneficiaries. Um, we received about seventy thousand this past year, we're trying to be a little more moderate. We've had a huge flux in program income as the market has been very favorable for refinancing and selling homes, but that's definitely slowing down now, so. We are going to be using a hundred and twenty-three thousand of these, of this funding allocation for administration and indirect, that's that twenty percent. Then we have a little over ninety-five thousand dollars that we can use for public services and the remaining amount can be used for housing or public improvement projects. So this is an overview of the proposals that we've received. Um, as you can see, as we do every year in that public services category, we have received proposals far above what we have available to fund. And I want to just kind of go over each of these for you. Our first proposal that I want to talk about is Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. They have requested two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to purchase two new units of permanently affordable rental housing. This would be a studio in a one-bedroom condo at Ponderosa Parkway. You'll remember that they did this last year and the year before, so this would be an additional two units, making it six total that they would have available in that development. And this will just offset costs, so they will still have financing. This funding just helps with their down payment to make it affordable for them to provide these at a, to low and moderate income households. And then under the public services category, we received a request from the Community Assistance Teams of Flagstaff, also known as CATS, for their Cats on Wheels program. They recondition use bicycles, they distribute them to folks who are, um, who are experiencing homelessness as well as they give them to schools that might have programs for low and, children from low and moderate income households to be able to have a bike to get to school. They proposed to serve two hundred individuals and the funds would be used for operations. So like the person that is running the program as well as rent for the space that they're using. Then we also received a request from Homeless Youth Connection for their Empowering Youth for the Future program. We have funded this in a past year. They propose to serve thirty youth, the forty thousand dollars will be used, used to employ two youth coaches. And these folks meet with youth one-on-one, they help address their long-term educational and employment goals, but they also help them access basic needs. So things like food, clothing, hygiene supplies, they'll take them to get a haircut, they'll take them to the doctor. Um, and then they also help them secure transitional or permanent housing. And Homeless Youth Connection currently has a transitional housing, I call it a facility, but it's a home, it's a home in a, in a neighborhood. And um, they are able to house youth that are completing their either high school or working into getting into college. Um, and then they help them find permanent housing as well, so that they are constantly moving towards permanency. And then Northland Family Help Center requested fifty-five thousand dollars to hire a youth shelter case manager. Um, they serve about fifty youth a year and so this person would be able to meet one-on-one with those individuals. They would help them, again, address their educational employment needs and then help these youth transition out of the shelter into permanent housing. Now that does sound a little duplicative, but I think it's important to know that Northland Family Help Center, the youth age out at eighteen. And Homeless Youth Connection can continue to work with youth after eighteen and in fact, that's what that transitional housing is for, is for youth who are eighteen to twenty-one.
Christine?
Yes.
And um, are the individuals entered into the HMIS system? So the organizations, the agencies are, they keep track of not duplicating, correct?
Yes, yeah, and I think, you know, there might be a little overlap as far as Northland Family Help Center goes when it comes to like actual, um, like the youth coaches are located at the schools. So if one of these individuals that is staying at Northland Family Help Center requests help with like the SATs or things like that, that's not something Northland would provide. And so there might be some duplication there, but as far as the housing and the case management goes, yes, they use HMIS in order to make sure there's no duplication, yeah. And then our last public service request was from Tinkertopia for what they're calling their Tinker Space Initiative. They're going to have a new location in the Sunnyside area and this is going to be specifically for older youth, so ages fourteen and up. They want to provide kind of just like a maker space and then classes on not only how to use the equipment, but also to start a business. Uh, how to run that business, price their, their things that they might want to sell or things they want to fix. Um, and the idea was that it would be an area benefit for Sunnyside because it is technically in the neighborhood. There, it's a little tricky with area benefit though, technically it needs to be available to everyone living in an area, not just youth. So were they to receive CDBG funds, they would need to gear this towards being available to everyone, not just youth over fourteen. And then we are going to be requesting funds for a community benefit project that staff has identified because we are going to have extra funds in that housing category. We only received the request from Housing Solutions, we're going to have likely closer to four hundred and seventy thousand dollars and they've requested two hundred and eighty thousand. And so one of the things we heard at some of our community meetings is that in Brandon Homes and Pine Knoll, there is some older, less exciting, maybe paint chipping kind of playground equipment. Um, and we really think it would be a great benefit to replace that playground equipment in Brandon Homes. So there are two areas, one has a very small piece of playground equipment and one much larger. Um, this would serve a hundred and twenty-six households in Brandon Homes, but also it's an area benefit for the entire Pine Knoll neighborhood because anybody walking through can use those playgrounds. And so that's over thirteen hundred people in that, in that neighborhood. So these are our funding recommendations. We recommend fully funding housing solutions for the acquisition of those rental units. We recommend fully funding Northland Family Help Center for their youth case management program and fully funding Homeless Youth Connection. Now if our funding amounts are less than what we expect to receive, Homeless Youth Connection would receive less funding, they would receive what we have available in that category. And then a hundred and twenty-three thousand for administration and indirect, so this means. So this means that the Community Assistance Teams of Flagstaff would not receive funding this year and neither would Tinkertopia. As you can see, we just used our scoring to, to make these decisions. So we started funding at the, at the top score until we ran out of funds. Unfortunately, we only have that $95,000. So these are our recommendations this year. And then we're just really seeking your directions so that we can come back and ask for that, that authorization to submit that annual action plan. It'll have those amounts listed very specifically. We need to turn in our annual action plan to HUD. I don't think we're going to make it May 15th because they haven't given us those amounts. Their direction is to wait until they have given us those final amounts before we formally hit submit on that document. So I am available for any questions you might have. And I'll go back to the slides so you can see what our recommendations are this year.
Thank you. Well done. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. Once again, Christine, I feel like I'm getting used to these presentations over the years. The Department of Housing and Urban Development is part of the executive branch. How secure is any of this? I mean, we, we heard Ross hint at it earlier today in another context, but we have an administration that seems to be giddy with any opportunity to slash and burn anything resembling stuff like this. So what, what, what are the tea leaves showing? What, what kind of chatter are you hearing out there?
That's a great question. So I meet almost on a monthly basis with our representative from HUD. And at this time, her communications to us has been to operate as business as usual year by year. So for this year, they did pass a continuing funding resolution, I believe is what it's called, in order to make sure that this year's budget is exactly the same as last year. So we know for sure that we will get an allocation of funds for this upcoming program year. As for year after year, I think that we have to kind of take it as it goes. From what I've heard from a lot of advocacy groups is that in order to keep programs like CDBG, we're going to need a lot of advocacy. And so we do work with an initiative that actually Marissa Malloy, our housing specialist, has kind of started spearheaded, where we meet with other entitlement communities around the state to work together to really focus that advocacy on specific things. And then many of them travel to the Capitol in January for a training and then they meet one-on-one with a lot of our representatives. So that's really nice because it's the power of all of the Arizona communities talking about how crucial these funds are. I think it'll be really important year over year that we have advocacy from you all as well.
And one other question. Flagstaff Shelter Services often comes up during these discussions. I don't see them on there at all this year and I haven't heard much chatter about that. Do you have an explanation for that or just a backstory?
I do, yeah. So if you'll remember, last year we allocated funds for the Lantern. And the year before that, we allocated funds for the Crown. What they're finding is that the project at the Lantern is probably going to be millions of dollars. And when it comes to CDBG funding, those regulations are so intense that sometimes it costs more money to use CDBG funding when you have a giant construction project on your hands. And so we have worked with them to put those funds over at the Crown and they are working to finalize a project over there in spending those CDBG funds. And I think at this time, they aren't really able to request more funding because they are undertaking such huge projects. So I expect that once the Lantern is complete, we'll start to see requests from them again. And I believe we'll see requests in both categories once we start to see some of these other major funding changes come down. I think that there's been other sources of funds for, for homeless shelters, but I think that a lot of those are, are probably going away. And so we'll see that public services category become even more competitive. And I think we will have our homeless providers needing funds as well. Hopefully that answered your question.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. I know in the past, we've, we've had a lot of questions about the, the allocation and the breakdown and how those amounts were selected. So I, I have no questions like that this time. I did just want to give voice, though, to the fact that I was there for this presentation to the Housing Commission and they did support this recommendation, I, I believe unanimously, in the vote to bring this forward. And they actually did ask some of those same questions as, as we have in the past on how the amounts were settled on or how the scoring was done. So I, I feel confident this year in, in supporting the recommendations as they've been presented.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, Christine. Good to see you again. So I too, much like Councilwoman Hou, Councilmember House, support the recommendations from staff. When I look for bang for our buck, on top of just the scoring, I, I, I first, my first inclination was to break up some of the Northland Family money and some of the, the Youth Connection, Homeless Youth Connection money to, to separate amongst the others. But I couldn't think of anything that would really be viable for the other two programs that were like a robust enough to make an impact for this program. So I'm completely on board with the staff recommendations for those reasons. I, I really love the Cats on Wheels program and Tinkertopia has always held a big space in my heart for what they do for our community. But under the circumstances, it just doesn't quite pencil for me as far as the impact that we could make to their programs with this heavily, I don't know if you want to call it red taped or just processed money that they would have to go through. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So a portion of the funding can be used for economic development or job creation, right? I'm really interested in housing rehab. And as I understand it, finding people to be able to do that rehab has been a challenge for anyone who's undertaking something like that. So if an organization were to come forward with job training, maybe helping local people start their own little mini handy person, construction type of company, could that be something that could be considered with CDBG funds?
That's a great question. So I've been doing a lot of researches to economic development. And what I have found is that a program like that would be great, but it does need to be run by someone who is considered the organization that is providing those funds out. So we thought, oh, well, could one of these, could the, even the Tinkertopia, could that be a job creation? Because they are creating two new jobs. But it doesn't work that way. When you give micro, micro enterprise assistance, it needs to be a grantor alone through a program that's developed. So perhaps the county has a small, their small business development program would be interested. Or perhaps our own Economic Vitality Department might be interested in spearheading something like that. And then it would be, it would be eligible and I think it would be a great use of funds. As far as actual job creation goes, there's a max amount of $10,000 per job. So not super helpful, but the micro enterprise assistance, you can do grants and loans up to whatever amount. So I think that that probably would be the way to go if we decide to do an economic development activity at some point.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other questions or comments. So thanks very much. Great, great discussion, great presentation. And thank you to everyone who was involved in ranking and scoring and discussing all of those applications. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah, thank you to our volunteers. We really appreciate your time. So thank you all.
All right. Next up, 1.10, Regional Plan Retreat. Review of Draft Agenda.
Hello. Good evening. I'm just, I was at the Board of Supervisors and Planning and Zoning Commission Retreat. Sorry, I'm Sarah Decter. I'm the Conference of, and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff. So I did not have a chance to pull up my PowerPoint ahead of time because I was busily making my way over here from the county. So if you'll just give me just a moment. All right. Thank you for your patience. So the regional plan is moving forward. We were very lucky to get a very large turnout in the 60-day public review. And we are at the point where we have incorporated most of those comments. And we are now going through the process of giving an updated draft to staff so that they can do another technical review. It's really important. One of our, one of our key metrics for success on the plan is that it be, I always say, implementable on day one, that we're not like figuring out implementation after people have voted on it, which was my experience with the plan 10 years ago. So we're working very carefully on that. But we, we want to come back to the Board of Supervisors, the City Council, and the Planning and Zoning Commissions of the city and county and do a check-in on this May 2nd retreat. So we've sent you in your packet an agenda and I will go over it a little bit tonight and just get your feedback because we, we are going to publish a final agenda for you Monday with additional packet information. So when we went to the county, we, we like to remind people that Flagstaff is only this little, the region, the greater Flagstaff region, as Supervisor Horstman likes to say, is only this postage stamp, but two-thirds of all the people who live in Coconino County live in this little purple box on the screen. So we have a big difference between the land area that we're covering in Coconino County's comprehensive plan and the area covered by the regional plan. The other reminder is that the, the reason we're doing this joint retreat is because this is a joint document on policy that is adopted by both entities. And, and we did have some discussion on that today with the Board of Supervisors. They said, is this a joint document? It is. We are trying to write one document that works within the legal context and the context of all the other plans for both jurisdictions, which takes a lot of cross-tabulation, like not a little, a lot, a lot, a lot. And I have a good amount of documentation of how hard staff is working to check all of those things. How does this work with the Belmont Plan? How does it work with the Doni Park Plan? How does it work with the Southside Plan? Are, do we, are we accidentally creating conflicts? That's what part of what takes, the step we're in is really double-checking all of those things, looking at them through different scenarios. But we, so for that reason, staff had originally hoped to provide you with a draft ahead of your retreat, which we do not feel able to do at this time because we do have some unresolved issues and we don't want to put out especially density numbers or policy guidelines, policies or guidelines that we are not confident are well-polished at this point. So we're going to take the retreat agenda into kind of a step higher. And there are some really key issues that you and the other people gathered for this retreat are going to be able to help with. So we'll talk about those on the next slide. Tonight, our goal is to get your feedback on the agenda so that staff can update it and send you a packet by Monday. I hope that we will have a draft update of the milestones that we will be working on for the rest of the year for the retreat. Back when I was here talking to at the last joint meeting, we had really hoped we'd be on the March 2026 ballot initiative. But I feel confident we need a few more weeks to do all the cross-checking and legal checking and ensuring that staff has got all their implementation concerns addressed. And so we are proposing to stay a little bit ahead of schedule, but work on the May 2026 mail-in ballot initiative instead. This again would be, still be mail alone, mail only, not any in-person portion of that election. And it's the same cost. It's really just taking our time with this important step. We don't want to be here with the first annexation or zoning case and not have clarity on how things will be applying. The last little news, and this is like breaking news, that I was meeting with people in the hallway head of City Council, is unfortunately, the renovations at the Aquaplex are not going to allow us to meet there on May 2nd. And so we are going to very quickly tomorrow announce that the retreat is being located now here in City Council Chambers, which our consultants believe they can easily make work. IT thinks they can make it work. Stacy's comfortable with it. So that's our, we are going to be making announcements of that that I hope you will share very widely because changing a meeting venue after we've advertised needs lots and lots and lots of shares. So as I said, at 1:00, I was at the, the Board of Supervisors and County Planning and Zoning Commission. They met together to talk about the upcoming retreat. And we really talked about a few things. We said, this retreat is kind of the turning point from phase three to phase four. Once we finish that retreat, we're in phase four. We are moving towards adoption. There were questions about facilitation at the meeting, so that I, I'd like to cover those here, too. There are going to be 29 elected and appointed Planning and Zoning Commission members at this meeting. And we want to give everyone a chance to discuss. It will be hybrid, which will be not as easy as if we were all online or all in person. But the reason we want to have as many people as possible in person is this, this is going to be much more like a workshop than like this meeting where we're all sitting around and looking at each other and having a conversation. There will be breakout tables. There will be activities on the wall. And we have two in-person facilitators coming from Cascadia Partners to do that. One of their facilitators is going to stay at their office in Portland and run online versions of those activities for members of the commission or council or the Board of Supervisors who are unable to make it in person. So there are three trained facilitators, not staff, running this meeting. So I hope that answers. People are like, how are we going to manage 29 people? It's a 1 to 10 ratio. I wouldn't do anything else to you. So we also, the, the Board of Supervisors wanted to make sure we have some clarity as we're working through this process, that there are going to be issues that are city-only or county-only, or maybe we need a disparate approach to reach the same goal. And we want to make sure that as we're looking at things, we're taking all of that into account. And then they also said there's a portion of the meeting where we're going to be talking about the Future Growth Illustration. And they wanted us to provide some examples, which staff will try and work a few of those up pretty quickly. The overall agenda for the joint retreat, which was in your packet, is going to start between 8:45 and 9:00 AM. We'll gather so that everybody can be seated at 9:00. We'll have group introduction and discussion. Just that first period of discussion is really about getting all the expectations out on the table. What do people expect out of this day? What can we do to make sure we're meeting as many of those as we can? Maybe there are other, there are expectations that haven't been surfaced yet and we're going to need other work sessions or other planning to address that. And that's where we'd like to get that information from you. We'll then try and do a very brief process overview. I feel that I have briefed all of the boards and commissions many, many times over the years and I keep you all as up to date as possible. And I know I sent everyone an email about four weeks ago that said, here's part one of your packet. So I know everyone got a chance to read some of that at least. But we don't want to take a lot of time with that. But we do want to cover some key points on the process and that's where we'll give you those milestone updates. Then there are four work session topics. And we will try and do public participation for each of them. The first one will be the organization of the plan, which we are looking to modify from the way it was organized for the 60-day review. A key part of that will be we have identified six priorities. They look a little different than the 60-day public review priorities. We definitely need feedback. Are these the right six? Is this how you want those priorities worded? Are there reasons the city and county have different words they would want to use in expressing our priorities? We know there's a lot of alignment with vision, but those will be really critical things to discuss. We will also share with you goals. We will not be sharing policies at this time because that's what we're still polishing in the staff and legal reviews that are ongoing. So there were a first draft of policies that you saw in the 60-day public document. That's the, that's all we have to share up to this point. I hope we'll be, we're going to be working towards making that available as early as possible so it's not just showing up in people's inboxes two weeks before a public hearing. Section two is going to be talking about the Future Growth Illustration. The Future Growth Illustration is the first part of the plan that planners open. When someone comes to the CD front counter or the county, community development counter and they ask, can I do this on my property? The first thing we do is go to this map. It is complicated. It is tied to a lot of different types of land uses and strategic decisions that were made as part of the scenario planning. So we want to go over it in detail. It was also very lightly commented on during the 60-day public review. The most frequent comment we got was, I would like my prop, my property to be in a different category. Really, only a few groups tried to look at the whole thing and understand it the way a planner a planner does where we're sitting at the desk or at the counter trying to have a conversation with an applicant. We want to make sure that council, the Board of Supervisors, and Planning and Zoning Commissions all have a feel for that space with us. So that is going to be a big part, almost two hours of the meeting, where we're going to be in breakout groups and we'll report back and describe what it is we've come to in terms of conclusions and any changes that are needed to the map. Part three is going to be talking about some trails mapping issues. So we have had a Flagstaff urban trails map in the plan for a long time. In the last 10 years, we have worked on the Flagstaff Trails Initiative, so working outside of the city in the bigger region. And then we also have the ATMP. In addition, there are private property owners that have expressed trespass concerns on the, on their property because we are showing trails that don't exist in the plan. And they go, well, somebody sees that line, they're going to come on my property. So this is an issue we're going to bring to this group for further discussion. The last thing is a new portion that we're trying to weave into the policies. We received a lot of comments on creating a portion of the plan that talks about community character. You're familiar with our current plan. It has a lot of community character information that often creates conflicting issues, and it's not one of the big priorities that the community brought. When we asked people, how important is this to you? It just didn't rise to that level. But the development pattern overall is very important, and we don't want to have a plan that puts us in a position of people assuming all new construction can be very brutalistic or utilitarian. We do want attractive buildings and buildings that create good neighborhoods and a sense of place. And so that's what we're trying to figure out how to incorporate. So we want your feedback on if we are, our first draft attempt at this, so we haven't shared this very far in the public, it's our first draft, is capturing what we all think as the bodies that are going to be looking at cases is important. And also just about that term, like creating a sense of place, that's what the planners think would be a better way of describing community character because it gets into the design portion and not just, I know I will like it when I see it, or I know what I like when I see it and I don't like things that I don't like. It's got to be a little more explicit than that. We'll also do some follow-up at the end of the day and have some group reflections, especially if there's anything we need to follow up on. Do we need to have follow-up work sessions? Are there e-sessions you want? That's going to be part of what we capture at the end of the May. And then we can finish at 5:00 PM or earlier if everybody's really succinct, which I'll remind you of, then that's also a possibility. So that's our agenda. I think the key questions from staff are, is this everything you really want to talk about? Are there things that are missing that you want to make sure we're covering? Or are there questions about this agenda that you'd like us to address tonight so you can feel prepared going into the retreat? And I'll go back to that.
Counsel, thoughts? Questions? Comments? You okay with the agenda? I think it's a very good idea to have a facilitator or several.
Yeah, two, two in-person and one online. It'll be a big group. But I hope that means there's lots of energy.
Yeah, me too. Excuse me.
Will the downstairs bathroom be ready by then?
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
Do I have to repeat that question?
No, I guess not. I should say too, I am taking recommendations on where you would like me to order lunch from, I guess, as well. Yeah, why don't you guys tell me?
To respond to the restroom question, we will have the porta-potties available outside.
Everyone's just getting their steps in lately.
And upstairs.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any concerns or desire for any changes, so this is looking good. And thank you for all the thought that you put into this. I'm looking forward to it. I do better at digesting this information in a group rather than just reading the plan, so I appreciate this opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, I am adjourning this meeting. And next, we have a special meeting, so I'd like to call that to order and give note, give notice that we could vote to go into executive session for consultation with our attorneys for legal advice on any item on the following agenda. And we do not need to take roll call again, is that correct? Okay, so 2.2 is counsel confirmation and direction, gazuntite. Approval of direction and instruction given by the city attorney in executive session today. Kevin, did you have anything additional?
Not really. I was just going to repeat what you just said.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to approve the direction and instruction given in executive session today, April 22nd, 2025.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving down to open call to the public, I see none. Then to informational items, to from. So let's start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Garcia.
All right. This past Friday, I had the pleasure of accepting an invitation to visit Arizona State Capitol along with some 300 federal, state, and local leaders, dancers, musicians, Civil War-era reenactors, and other patriotic citizens to celebrate Arizona's kickoff of our national quintessential 250-year anniversary. This event, emceed by Secretary of State Adrian Fuentes, featured indigenous hoop dancers, cultural musicians, plenty of booths, and sons of the American Revolution who helped reenact Paul Revere's Last Ride. Despite cooler temperatures, cooler than average temperatures and some rain, this event was more than just fun and festivities for me. It was, it made it available and enable to have some informative conversations and meet some influential Arizona politicians. And to be honest, that was my favorite part of the night. So Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego asked me to say hello to you, Madam Mayor Daggett, and she expressed delight about a project that you are both partnering on, Secretary of State Adrian Fuentes. And I discussed his role in bringing us, our veteran home, to McMillan Mesa, and we wrapped briefly about all things Washington. I also ran into a gaggle of local leaders that I had met at League of Cities meeting during our warm-up event for our city council seats this last year. And that spawned a dinner with El Mirage's City Councilmember Scotty Gentry, where we chatted about responsible budgeting and the employee handbook. Glendale City, Glendale City Councilmember Lupe Conches was another gentleman I ran into, where we met the following day at his town hall meeting and chatted about being freshman council people, persons, and immigration policy, before he introduced us to U.S. Representative Congresswoman Yasmin Ansari, where I was invited to her town hall meeting later that afternoon, where we also discussed, there was a heavy discussion around immigration policies, tariffs, and how folks in Washington are responding to the new administration. And, and of course, the topic that was hotter than ten P in late, in late July, and that was just the immigration topic. It just kept coming back over again in these town hall meetings. So while I was down in the valley this weekend and not up here, it was still working hard for the Flagstaff community, and I can't wait for the next opportunity to make more inroads at the state Capitol. As relationships are a key facet in growing a network we can rely on as council people to help inform our decisions here in Flagstaff. And just so you all know, I expect to have many other council people from all over the state to start frequenting this area so we can get to know them better because everybody wants to come cool off in the northern Arizona pines. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan.
No to from, from me tonight.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, tomorrow, I'll be attending the United Way Annual Meeting. There's a Dark Skies event this Thursday on Heritage Square, Starlight in the Square, and it is from 7:00 to 10:00. I will be there. And congratulations to all of those nominated for the Viola Awards. I have a lot of friends in the mix this year, and I'm just so proud of everyone who has been nominated. The Viola Awards are this Saturday at the Orpheum Theater. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was looking up a question for the CDBG presentation, I saw that it is actually National Community Development Week, so wanted to recognize that and our city team that work in community development and thank them for their work. Today, I was able to attend the green ribbon cutting for two electric buses at Flagstaff Unified School District. It was a partnership of the district, the school board, their bond oversight committee, our city sustainability team, and Mountain Line to make those buses possible, as well as celebrating their appreciation of the bus drivers and volunteers and everyone who makes that possible. They also, during the event, shared the city's attainable housing survey, so that was a wonderful collaboration. And I, I believe there were people that were filling that out for us as well, so great to have that happen. As Councilmember Aslan referenced earlier in the meeting, congratulations to Sharon Lucati, who absolutely smashed the record for women's completion in the Boston Marathon yesterday. And just reminder to folks that there is the Free Fair Housing Training on Friday from 9:00 to 12:00 right here at City Hall.
Councilmember Spence.
Councilmember House, you've taken the words out of my mouth on that ribbon cutting. As a bus driver, I was in the advocacy role, and it truly is an exciting milestone for FUSD to have two fully-electric, 72-passenger school buses on the road. So thank you for that feedback.
I, last week, wrapped up my mayoral fellowship with the Mayor's Institute on City Design. It was phenomenal. It was a semester-long project, and each of the eight mayors gave presentations on our projects. And it was, it was really interesting to see the difference in communities. Some communities that, for a variety of reasons, have areas where there's been disinvestment and other communities like ours that have housing prices that are, we're trying to get a handle on. So it was just a phenomenal experience, and I'm going to have some more free time now. I want to remind the public that we have a budget retreat on Thursday and Friday. And next Tuesday, a couple of us are going down to the Capitol for our annual lobbying trip. And we've got a lot to talk to our legislators about, so I'm looking forward to that.
City Manager.
Nothing from us, thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.